All right, well, thank you, everybody, and welcome to the October twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting of the Worcester Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees. Please remember to stay muted unless talking and state your name clearly for the record. Uh, we'll start off with a roll call, the trustees, trustee Agadello here, trustee Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Hampton Dance.
Here.
Trustee Kefor. Trustee McAvoy.
Here.
Trustee Pinkcomb.
I'm here.
And trustee Valdez. With that, we'll go to our first item here, uh, the overview, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Tier One application scoring process. With that, the chair recognizes, uh, Mrs. Jeanette Tozer Kazmi.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so tonight we'll review the results of the Tier One application scoring and discuss potential conditional commitments. Um, so as you'll recall, the trust received eight Tier One applications following withdrawal of a ninth application. So trustees evaluated each proposal using the adopted scoring criteria, which included depth and duration of affordability, readiness to proceed, accessibility and universal design, financial feasibility, development team capacity, and sustainability and resilience. Trustees submitted independent scores and the average scores were compiled for review, which I shared with the board electronically. Um, so the average scores in descending order, um, the highest scoring application was for thirty-three Ripley Street. Uh, which received a score of eighty-nine point two, followed by Claremont Street Seeds of Hope Tiny Homes, which received eighty-eight point seven. Then Curtis Apartments Phase Two, which received eighty-seven point eight. Then one oh four Armory Street, which received a score of eighty-three point two. Colony on Grove, um, was tied with eighty-three point two as well. Uh, twelve Benefit Street received eighty-one point eight points on average. Twenty-six Claridge, uh, received seventy point eight and, uh, thirty-six Fifth Avenue received sixty points on average. So these scores, you know, generally indicate a strong pool overall, um, particularly among those top four projects, um, which they all, you know, demonstrate readiness and alignment with trust fund priorities. Um, I do also want to share a quick update on the tier two applications. So as I noted in my update to the board yesterday, we received four proposals. Uh, we are still reviewing those internally, um, but it does seem like two of the four may not be eligible. So with the remaining two, um, the total, uh, is just under two million in requests. Um, so these again are currently under review. Um, we'll discuss those proposals at the next meeting, which is scheduled for November twelfth. Um, but the focus tonight is on tier one. Um, so with that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our next item here, discussion and vote for the fall twenty twenty-five Tier One funding recommendations and commitments. Um, so moving into discussion, uh, and recommendations, as a reminder, the Affordable House Housing Trust Fund has one point two five million dollars available this round through the Community Preservation Act, the CPA Act. Uh, funding in our deliberations tonight, please keep that in mind. Uh, when the board votes to award funds, if the board of, uh, votes to award funds, the initial step is issuing a conditional commitment letter. This letter outlines the conditions that must be met before we can move forward to a contractual agreement with the developer. Uh, typical conditions include completion of an affirmative fair housing marketing plan and submission of environmental reports such as phase one, phase two assessments. As trustees, we can vote to add other relevant conditions as well, such as third-party review of construction costs. And we may also consider awarding funding amounts that are less than requested, depending on the project's financial feasibility and other factors. Following the discussion, the board may vote to approve conditional commitments for selected projects, subject to standard conditions, including environmental due diligence and submission of affirmative, uh, of an affirmative fair housing marketing plan. Uh, so suggested framework for, uh, discussion and votes, um, will go, uh, in, uh, descending order from the, uh, the amount of average scores. So let's talk about thirty-three Ripley first, uh, and that was a Habitat for Humanity, uh, project. Are there any board comments or questions for the developer?
Uh, through the chair, uh, this is trustee Pinkcomb. You're asking if we have questions specifically for the developer, or is this discussion on the actual funding of the project?
Uh, discussion on the funding or questions if the developer is present.
I don't have any questions specifically for the developer, uh, but, you know, through the chair. As stated, we have one point two five million available. And if you add up everything, we're at one point eight five million. So we're a little over that. So we obviously need to, I guess, as a, as trustees, need to figure out how we're going to make that work. Right? We'd love to see more affordable housing in the city, but I believe that we may need to adjust how much we're, um, we're giving to each of these projects. I think potentially all of them need to be adjusted. So that's my comments.
Definitely think that's a valid point, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And, you know, as we go through different projects, we can figure out where we may want to modify allocation. If we want to move forward with projects. Maybe opening it up a little bit broader, are there, uh, comments, points that anyone wants to call out on the, 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 any of the projects that we reviewed here?
Uh, through the chair, um, specifically on Ripley Street. Um, I think maybe if we go kind of one by one and, and highlight some, some key points, uh, so they, um, they are number one, uh, they're ready to go, um, so they meet the, the timeliness definition of, of tier one. Um, and, um, and they're, they'll be well in their way, um, in the spring. So, uh, readiness wise, I think, um, you know, they, they meet all the other considerations. Um, as far as financing, they do have other financing in place with a construction loan. So, uh, those are my comments as, as far as Ripley right now. And I'm, I'm sorry, one other thing through the chair, they, they are proposing, um, a restriction, affordable housing restriction in perpetuity, which, uh, is definitely a plus.
Any other points on thirty-three Ripley? That anyone wants to call out? So maybe we can move to our next item here, or our next project Claremont Street, the Seeds of Hope Tiny Homes, with an average score of eighty-eight point seven?
Uh, through the chair, um, this is trustee Pinkcomb. I have to recuse myself from this conversation. For Claremont Street specifically.
Uh, through the chair, again, just, just some highlights. Um, so this is a senior oriented project. I just want to make sure, um, for the S H I inventory, uh, they, they're aware, uh, that they, uh, are subject, uh, would be subject to that as well as a, a, a affirmatively, uh, furthering for, um, marketing plan. Um, I know it's a specific population, but that would be one of the things I would highlight, um, if we do move forward with this proposal.
So through the chair, if I may, uh, jump in, I think one other consideration as the applications are being reviewed. Um, going back to the point that was made about, um, make, you know, funding as mu- many affordable units as possible, um, given the one point two five million dollar limitation that we have in the current funding round. Um, I do, um, I would encourage trustees to consider, um, the feasibility of funding projects with smaller, um, maybe perhaps funding them at a lesser amount than requested, if it seems like, um, a project would still be feasible. Um, so one example being, um, thirty-three Ripley Street, you know, the highest scoring application. Um, it does, if you look at the underwriting forms and the application, it does seem like, um, they would be able to move forward with the project with a smaller amount. They are requesting the maximum and it is eligible, but like, that project, for example, could move forward with a smaller funding amount.
Through the chair, when do we discuss, when do we say like, hey, here's what I think we should be doing for funding? That's a question directly to you, Ms. Tozer, or, sorry, I remember it says on the screen, what's your last name again, Ms. Kazim? Ms. Kazim, sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I thought you were directing it back to the chair. So it's really, I mean, it's up to, through the chair, um, it's really the chair's discretion and the, up to the board, it's your discussion.
So, uh, through the chair, if I can make a suggestion, uh, maybe if we go through each project individually, I know we have, uh, a number of members of, of each project or a lot of the projects on here. Um, it might be worth it, uh, to, to ask, uh, them directly if we, we have those questions, such as, is it feasible if a lesser amount, uh, is awarded? Um, or any other pertinent questions, if maybe that's the direction we could take, just go one project at a time and, and invite them, uh, to answer any of the relevant questions.
Wonderful. Well, seeing as we, through the chair, we went through thirty-three Ripley, is anybody here representing thirty-three Ripley? No. All right, then no questions for them.
Sorry, everybody, I cut out for a few moments there, but, uh, picking back up there, so if we're good with thirty-three Ripley, um, are we in a good position to move to Claremont Street?
I believe you are, just again, through the chair, I need to refuse.
Yes, you're accused, yep. Do any, does anybody on the board have any questions, uh, on the Claremont Street project?
Through the chairs, anyone from the developer on the call now? No.
So we don't have the developer, there's no, we can't ask questions there. Uh, the only comment there is, uh, taking a note of just the, the relative cost, uh, per unit requested, um, maybe something worth revisiting, just based off of like what the scope of the project is.
Through the chair, um, I, I guess, because I'm, I'm just listening, I'm being attentive, because I know that, um, we have eight projects, they was like the top four for me, um, that scored high. And just trying to figure out, like, I guess what the consensus is from what I'm getting from everyone is just trying to figure out how to divvy up the monies so that everyone can get their project completed. And, um, I guess how I'm looking at it would be in a way of, what other funding do they have? Who has funding? Who, um, kind of is asking for the inflated amount or the maximum amount? Um, that, like Jeanette said, doesn't actually necessarily need the, uh, maximum amount and could take our lower amount. And looking at those projects and then trying to figure out where to go from that point.
So I'm going to jump in for one, for one more moment, um, through the chair. Okay, it looks like your sound is working. Um, I see that there is an alert for spectrum service, um, outages, so that may be affecting the meeting as well.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, again, I, I don't know if you were on, uh, before, what I suggested, um, is maybe to go through each, uh, project individually. Um, review the trustees' comments, and if, uh, if the developer or representative is online, um, if they want to, you know, answer the questions. Um, and then maybe at the end, once we've, we've had that time to, to ask those questions, uh, we could review, you know, potential funding amounts, if that makes sense. Is that chair offline again, or?
It's showing him online, but muted. Victor, are you frozen? Is it possible for trustees to turn on, um, it may need to get situated, but it would be easier to know if people are frozen or not if, um, your camera is on.
I cannot turn on my camera, I'm sorry.
That's fine, it's, it's, if, if feasible.
Hey, guys, I'm sorry, I'm back, I'm, it's a little unreliable of a connection right now, but I, uh, trying to tether right now with my phone, they should make it better. And what I was able to pick up in between the cutting is going through project by project, that makes sense. Um, I don't think there's other points I heard, or correct me if I'm wrong, on Claremont, so maybe we move to Curtis Apartments, uh, is anybody?
Through the, the chair?
Yep.
Um, yeah, what I had mentioned is go project by project, if there are questions or concerns, um, trustees have, uh, there are various representatives here on the call. Uh, we could ask those questions, um, once we, we go through the, the, the eight projects and then after that have the, the actual amount discussion, the funding amount discussion.
Sounds good. So I know there wasn't much discussion on Claremont here, um, maybe we can move to the next one, uh, Curtis Phase Two. Um, any, uh, thoughts, uh, observations folks had on, uh, on that project they want to make?
Through the chair, do we have any representatives here from, um, Curtis Apartments? We do?
Hello, yes, Vivian Lee from Trinity Financial.
And Peter Pro from Worcester Housing Authority.
Good evening to both of you. Um, I mean, overall, I, I believe it was a, a strong application. Um, you know, you scored well, I think, I guess my question is, can this project move forward if we're not able to commit the entire, I believe you requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Um, you know, is that a make or break, or do you feel that you'd still be able to move forward if we were able to give you some, but not all of the money?
Um, so it is, um, you know, relative to the total development costs, the two hundred fifty thousand is, um, is small, but it is the last piece and, um, with this funding, we would be able to return the two hundred and fifty thousand of home funds back to the city. Um, so we really see this as a net, a net zero, um, insofar that the AHTF CPA funds are sized, um, to the award, um, the previous award for the home funds. And, um, you know, we're hopeful that the two hundred fifty thousand can be swapped. But, um, it would, it would make it more difficult to move to a closing. We are currently positioned where if we can swap these two sources, um, and move forward without the BABA requirements that are in connection with the home funds, then we have a much clearer path to closing.
Well, thank you so much for that explanation. Um, so just to make sure I understand correct, you are requesting two hundred fifty thousand dollars and creating eight, I'm sorry, um, what's the total number of new units, thirty-four?
The, the phase two is, is one hundred fifty total units.
New units, new.
And.
Net.
So net, it's, a net would be, um, thirty-six, a hundred and fourteen would be demolished, a hundred fifty would be built new, um, so thirty-six net new.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, um, who this question is for, but, um, would those home funds come back into the Affordable Housing Trust, or would they go somewhere else within municipal, uh, funding? I'm not sure if someone can clarify that.
Jim, do you want to take it, or do you want me to?
Sure, I can take it. Uh, those do, those are not part of the funding allocation, uh, through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The Housing Development Division, uh, oversees those funds, those funds are through HUD, uh, allocated directly to the city, uh, through an entitlement process. Um, and I know some, some people know what, what home funds are, but some, some maybe are, uh, is familiar. Uh, recently, um, HUD put in restrictions for Baba Build America, Buy, Buy America, Build America, uh, which is, um, administratively very cumbersome, um, to, basically, you're looking at every single piece, two by four, or, um, you know, any, any type of fixtures and equipment, uh, coming on site to make sure, uh, they're, they were built in America. Um, and it's a very cumbersome process, uh, and an expensive process, it can cost, you know, twenty or thirty percent more on a project. So, um, through the chair, just, uh, wanted to, to review quickly with the developers online here. I, I know phase one is, um, is kind of coming towards completion here. Uh, phase two, are, are you ready to, to really get going on that with relocations or tenants? Uh, do you have your relocation plan set, um, and ready, travel ready, ready to go?
So the relocation plan is well underway, um, and as you mentioned, with phase one progressing so well, the first building will actually be a resource for, um, families that need to be relocated in connection with the second phase of the project. So, um, we have a pretty small handful of families that need to be relocated at this point. Um, and they will be relocated throughout the housing authority's portfolio. Um, but at this point, it is, it is tracking along very, very well, um, with the timeline that, that we have to execute on a closing and construction start for the phase two site.
Thank you.
Um, and just, uh, I guess, sorry, uh, through the chair, one last question, um, on our sheet here, it just, uh, really has two sources as pending still. Uh, the passive house incentives, um, do you have a status on that?
I do, so the, um, part of the passive house certification process will release the funds that are associated with that source, so it will be upon certi- it will be upon completion that those are available. But we do have, um, the certification and the, the pre-construction, um, I'm blanking on the word, but it's a pre-construction approval signaling that the project as it stands today is on track to really, to receive the balance. And, um, we do already, we are already eligible for some of that award, um, in connection with pre-development engineering, um, for the passive house component of the project.
Thank you.
Is the chair still with us?
Yep, I was just waiting to see if there are any other points there. Um, if not, then I guess keeping this, uh, same, uh, flow in motion for one oh four Armory Street, uh, where the, were there any thoughts, questions on that, and is the developer on it? I imagine it's the same one for Ripley, so I don't think they are. So with this project, I think that there were some, uh, studies that still needed to be done, so this may be a candidate for potentially looking at smaller dollars, uh, being awarded if we were to award prod, uh, funds.
Through the chair, just, uh, the one thing to point out on this one too, there is some environmental contamination on this site, um, where I think, um, there's some cost containment there, but I don't know if they totally have a exact number there.
Thank you for bringing that point up. And a reminder too, with just the projects, uh, any of these that, uh, if we elected to not award funds because they scored over the threshold on the, uh, the, uh, reviews, they wouldn't have the same cooling off period. So they could always come back to, uh, a pretty immediate next round pending our own funding. Any other thoughts, uh, points to discuss on one oh four Armory Street? All right, hearing none, we'll move next to, uh, Colony on Grove, uh, the beach project. Uh, do we have any representative from, uh, the colony project?
Yes, we do, Craig Nicholson with Affirmative Investments.
Thanks for joining us, Craig. Uh, so do we have any questions, uh, thoughts on the Colony project?
Through the chairs, trustee Pinkcomb. Um, I see it, from what I'm looking at, it's a total of forty-eight units, twelve of them are new units, is that correct? Twelve net new?
That's correct, yeah, twelve net new.
Okay. Um, and you're requesting four hundred thousand dollars in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Correct.
That's obviously, you know, quite a bit, uh, a chunk of that one point two five. Um, looks like, you know, you guys have other finances and so forth. Will you be able to move forward with this project if we cannot commit the entire four hundred thousand dollars?
Um, yes, um, it's, you know, actually, one of the things I would It's, you know, actually one of the things I would love to discuss. And it kind of ties in with the, uh, with the Curtis phase two is that, you know, we are receiving home funds, we've received home funds for Apple, and we're going to be subject to Baba. So, you know, ensuring that we don't cross a threshold that triggers Davis Bacon, but we could supplement a lower amount, uh, through the trust with some additional home funds.
Thank you for answering my question, sir.
Been through the chair, um, probably similar questions that I just asked too. Um, as far as relocation, uh, where, what, what's your plan there? Where do you stand as far as relocating between the two different phases?
Um, Apple is 100% done. We've relocated them to existing colony properties. Um, and then for Beach, we're a little over halfway done in relocating the existing residents into existing colony, uh, properties. We believe by the time we are able to close and break ground, which is, you know, Q2 of next year, um, based on bond availability being 2026, that we should be able to get all of the rest of the residents relocated into colony facilities. If not, we're talking about just a handful, three or four or five people that I think can easily be accommodated in some of the new market rate apartments that of course the project would pay for.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions, uh, observations on the colony project? So hearing none, we'll move next to, uh, 12 Benefit Street. Do we have a representative from, uh, Bakwa LLC?
I, I see that you're unmuted, but no sound is coming through, Charles. So we do have a, a representative, um, online. Oh, yes, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, Charles Boykwe here. For 12 Benefit Street.
And does the board have any questions, uh, for Mr. Charles here?
Through the chair. Um, the trustee Pincombe here. Charles, where are you at with construction? Has construction started on that project already?
Um, yeah, so we've, um, currently finished, um, most of the Roth. Um, and we'll be moving, uh, through inspections now. We just had, um, HVAC inspection, electrical inspection. Um, plumbing is, plumbing and gas is next. So the project is moving along pretty well, as planned.
And the, thank you. Uh, the specific reason I was asking that is there was a devastating fire on Main Street and Benefit Street, um, last night. Was there any smoke, water, any other damage done to your building or any of the materials that might be on site?
Um, no, no, it was, um, it was two, two houses down the road from us. So it didn't touch us at all, thankfully.
I wasn't sure exactly where. I know it was close to Main Street, but how close it was, so, um, that's good news. And, um, you know, same question I've had for everybody so far is, will this project be able to move forward? Should we not be able to commit the entire, I think you requested $288,500 for the creation of two units, uh, two affordable housing units? Um, if we're not able to commit the entire 288,500, um, will this project still be able to move forward?
We should be able to still move, uh, things forward. Um, we've had discussions already about the possibility of this happening and what we would do. Um, and we discussed that we could tap into, um, line of credit to, to help us get the project to the finish line.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you, Charles.
Thank you.
Jim, if you're talking, you're muted.
I hit it twice, sorry. Through the chair, uh, just, uh, one or two questions here, um, on our underwriting forms. Your current construction financing, it said it had a maturity date in October. Um, have you been able to negotiate with that construction lender to, to extend that out?
We, uh, we completed that, um, extension contract, um, last week. So we now extend it to January 17th.
Okay.
So we did a three-month extension, both, um, the, the loan and the insurance on the property. So, yeah, we all said, we all squared away there.
Okay. Um, and then, oh, you have a long-term lender ready to go in place for?
That is correct. Um, Charles River Bank is, has begun processing all documentation for, um, the conventional, um, loan. So yes, we, we've started that process already.
Okay. I think, uh, other than that, and I know it's a short timeline, and this maybe is, uh, a question from his toes or two. Uh, with the affirmative fair housing marketing plan, I know those take a little while. Um, with the timeline here, is that gonna fit or?
Yeah, so once, once we have, um, the green light from the board, um, that we're gonna be, um, assisted with the, with the project. My plan is to, uh, kick that, kick that off right away so that we can fall within that three-month timeframe, um, and get things done, uh, by the time the project is completed. So yes, it's something we have already discussed, and we have spoken to a couple consultants. Um, and, uh, we just need to select one and just move forward with the process once we get approval.
Through the chair, if I may, uh, chime in, um, directly related to that, that question. Um, so I attended a training with HLC on Monday regarding, um, this, the process of submitting the affirmative fair housing marketing plan, um, for their review and approval to get units onto the subsidized housing inventory, which is the whole purpose of, um, providing the funding and going through that affirmative fair housing marketing process. And the typical timeline, um, for their review and approval, like from start to finish, once you, um, you know, create that plan and uh, complete the application that's submitted to the state by HLC, I'm sorry, that's the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, and that's the state agency that oversees subsidized housing inventory and has to review the, the plans and the, what's called the local action unit application. It's about nine months before lease up. So, um, another question for the applicant, given that it is a longer timeframe, um, before you'd be able to lease the, the two affordable units, is that still feasible for your project?
Nine months? Okay. Um, that is, that is news to me. We would have to go back to, uh, review the numbers again. Uh, but I think we could, uh, we could hold the, the two units, rent up, um, the, the other four, hold the two units until we, um, that, that plan is ready to go if we get, uh, the funding from the board.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So having no other questions on this project, uh, we'll move to 26 Claridge renovation. Uh, do we have any representative from Go Venture Capital Group? All right. So having no representatives here, do we have, uh, any, uh, points to call out on this particular project?
Through the chair, I mean, I, I think my concern is it's, it's one unit they're asking for 112,000. It's only an 80% um, AMI that they're going with. Um, and I just, I don't know, I feel that they're, they're asking for a sizable amount when we have limited funds. And that was my concern, just again, one affordable housing unit, uh, with an 80% AMI compared to some of the other ones. Also. What was that?
Nope, fair point to call out.
Also, I think, um, I'm trying to remember when I scored it, I was a lot more detailed than I, um, I think part of it was we needed some construction costs. I can't remember exactly what it was, if there was the cost that we were concerned about or that I was personally concerned about, um, making sure they were following the ADA guidelines and so forth. Um, that would need to be done as part of this because they're taking an existing single family, um, and trying to, you know, it does have to be ADA compliant. So those are my concerns.
Absolutely valid concerns. Thank you for calling those out. And I, on the, on the ADA front, that'd be an important consideration because if we remember several sessions ago, the supply for ADA, uh, in that ballpark, I think 60 to 80 was one where it's a specific pain point for, for that community. But, um, now appreciate the observations. Any other, uh, points, observations, anybody wanting to call out here?
Through the chair, if I may just give a little, um, this is, uh, if I can provide a little bit of commentary on this, um, to highlight that this is a homeownership, um, project, and the applicant has acquired the property, um, from the city through an RFP process. Um, so I do just want to point out that the, um, data restriction would, um, they're proposing that it will be in perpetuity. Um, that said, um, there are, uh, you know, as trustee Pincombe noted, some, some questions around, um, the cost, some of the costs in their budget. Um, but I just wanted to, to highlight that, um, for this application.
Thank you for calling that out. Any other callouts on this particular, uh, application? So hearing none, we'll, we'll move towards our last application, uh, 36 Fifth Avenue. Um, do we have Robert on?
Yes, right here.
Our wonderful, thank you for joining us. Uh, do we have any questions for Robert from the board?
Uh, yes, trustee Pincombe here. Robert, you've heard me ask everybody else who's on this call the same question. Uh, so it shouldn't come as a surprise to you, but, um, if we're unable to commit the entire requested amount, which let me just go back to my notes here. Uh, looks like you are requesting for the creation of one. Hold on, let me just find it. Sorry, give me one second. Um, you're requesting $150,000 for the creation of one studio, uh, affordable housing unit, is that correct?
It's, uh, it's one bedroom and it is one that's being offered through your program. Um, but the other three are going to, uh, Worcester Housing, one's going to CHL, one's going to Department of Mental Health. Um, and I, and I know that's not part of what you're doing, but this, this is a, you know, I spent a lot of time on the pro forma, and you know, we really, uh, worked hard to get the numbers down to where we, where we could be, uh, feasible to make this product, project come to fruition. With my operational cost around 30%, my debt service being about 1.37. You know, I got my GC, um, at like 9%. You know, when we really shake this thing out, you know, because I'm not going to be getting gang busta money on the other three units. Again, those are going to be low income housing, but for this meeting, yeah, one is going to be low income and ADA. Um, and, and to be perfectly honest, I, I need the 150 or I'll just put the lot up for sale. And, um, you know, somebody can put two side-by-side, you know, uh, market rent units or do, do whatever. I really want to do this. I'm a landlord by trade. I've been taking care of folks in Worcester, uh, for, since 2005. Only, um, taking care of Worcester Housing, CMHA, CHL, DMH. I, I know what I'm doing and, um, my, my pro forma really, you know, I, I hit all the marks, but, uh, we kind of, we kind of need that 150. And, and the end result is we're going to take care of four, four people.
Uh, you know. Well, thank you, Frank, for, for, um, going through that with me a, and, and with us. Um, a, as you stated though, we have to look at $150,000 for one Affordable Housing Trust Fund unit. Um, and I understand the overall project is also going to be supplying that, but we like a dollars per, per unit. Uh, a couple other, I guess, questions I had when, one of my concerns was, um, you, you stated that one unit will meet the ADA requirements, but the plans don't provide evidence of that. Um, do you have updated plans that, have we received them, has Shannet received them showing that it is actually ADA compliant?
I'll let my, Michael Conan speak to that if I may. He's, he's my builder.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Mike with, uh, Central Mass Builders. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, that, that plan, um, is being updated to show one of the, uh, lower level units being ADA, uh, uh, compliant. And, uh, we, we can have that to you shortly.
Thank you. Um, one of the stipulations I'd want is to have the, um, you know, the, the cost be verified. I think the engineering cost is a little bit on the high side for a smaller project. Um, so just asking, you know, should we move forward with this project with funding that, um, we'd get those costs verified? That's all I have for questions. I promise I'm done now.
Thank you, Jason.
Uh, through the chair, just, um, a question again on the fair housing marketing plan. Um, looks like this project's gonna, you know, go pretty quickly here, or is proposed to, uh, with that potential timeline, um, as Tozer put out, would it work still with the, the nine months?
I'm gonna say yes, but I, I want my, my builder to, uh, also chime in on that.
Yeah, yeah. What we said as far as the nine months ago, as far as funding?
Um, so the, uh, fair housing marketing plan, um, would have to be in place for this, um, for that one unit, um, for lease up. Would that hold things up both financially, I guess, and construction wise?
In that, you're saying that that takes nine months? Is that what you were saying? But what's the timeframe on, on that? I mean, we're, we're ready to go at, at any time. We're just waiting for the approval of this. So this, this, uh, project is pretty much shovel ready.
Sure. So it's through the chair, I can, um, try to address that. Um, so the, the timeline for the state's approval of the affirmative fair housing marketing plan and the associated application that has to be submitted, um, they stated this past Monday that, that it's approximately nine months from the time, um, a permit, could be a building permit or land use approval is issued for a project. And, um, the, the plan is created and the application is completed. From that moment, um, or that start time is about nine months, um, before final approval um, is typically, uh, provided. And that, but it, the approval is necessary in, in order to actually lease the affordable unit.
Sure. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I fully understand. We've, we've talked to, um, couple of, uh, outside, uh, folks on this, um, consulting firms, you know, they, they told us, you know, basically anywhere from, you know, 30 weeks, you know, right around that, uh, seven to 10-month period, um, to get all this done. And I, I'm good with, uh, that timeframe of leaving that one unit, you know, vacant until we, we have all the, what we need to, uh, put somebody in there, you know? We're, we're good. We have the, the ability to do that and still cover our mortgage and, um, everything that's entailed. We're we're good. We have the the ability to do that and still cover our mortgage and everything that's entailed with. Keeping the project sustainable until that that happens. Sorry, been factored in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you.
So through the chair, I have a proposal for how to proceed. And anybody else can chime in and, you know. You can use a different process, but I think it might be useful to to go through and. Review each project in a a funding amount or proposed funding amount and have the board potentially vote. That way, but you'll want to go through all of the projects to make sure the total comes out to one point two five million, but that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I can try keeping track here when the totals as we go through.
Through the chair, I will be doing that.
All right. Mr. Chair, are you still there? Should we start, I guess, start with number one? And get the board's input as yes, no, and then funding amounts or amount. And any any additional. Items to put in the conditional commitment, if so, move to fund.
Works for me. So for the thirty three Ripley Street project, and I suppose we can. Go in that descending order of most approved or most highest score to lowest score. So for thirty three Ripley Street, the Habitat for Community project. Bear with me here. A motion to to fund the project would, I guess, let me think through this motion here. So I move that was that the Worcester Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees approved conditional funding commitments to. The thirty three Ripley Street Habitat for Community project. In the about amount to be indicated, subject to standard. And project specific conditions as recommended by the staff. Do I have a second to that motion?
I second the motion.
But we need to, what's the amount? We need to put in the mountain there.
I think we can have a discussion now that we've had the motion to bring it to the floor. Is that right? Am I misreading this? Misunderstanding?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, yeah, we can make a motion to to do that, I guess.
My my understanding of the suggestion, Jim, was that we would. Have a motion to fund and then a discussion to determine.
Trustees are good with that? Good with that?
We just don't have enough money all around, so I I think the way I'm looking at this is. In order to fund, I'd like to see every project funded, right? I mean, this would be great. Let's create more affordable units. But we can't, we can't fund them all, not at a hundred percent. So we're either going to have to say, hey, we're dropping these ones and. And that would be the lower tiered ones, and not the lower tier, but the lower scoring ones, unfortunately. Or we could say, let's let's spread this out a little differently. And I'm I'm of the mindset of I'd rather spread it out a little differently over declining an applicant who's. You know, looking to add a unit into the city.
Sure, okay, we can do it that way.
That's my opinion, but again, that everybody else has opinions and they should speak them. For me, this project that we're specifically talking about thirty three Ripley, I would propose. Cutting that down to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. I've got all my math worked out already for these.
For the chair, I agree with Jason.
Through the chair, I'm also in agreement. With Jason.
So I guess my, I'm through the chair, I'm motioning to approve it. For thirty three Ripley Street for the funding amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is, I don't know if I'm allowed to make that motion. Forgive me for maybe not following the proper procedures here. But, you know, if you want to make that motion, however it might work, and then we vote on that, I guess, is what would happen next. Am I understanding the process correctly? Miss Tozer Kazim?
So you could either, you could go, you vote project by project, but do you recommend. Discussing dollar amounts overall and to make sure that it totals up to one point two five. So it's really up to the board, whatever.
No, that makes more, you're correct, that does make a lot more sense.
For Ripley Street, is there anything the the board wants to put as. As an additional consideration in the conditional commitment if we do move forward, other than I think. Mr. Tozer has all the general conditions that are normally in there, any environmental reports and appraisals. The the affordable marketing plan, anything else? I forget, but.
Through the chair, I think I would rely on on. Jeanette and and you to decide if there's anything additional. As you are the experts here, if there's any additional oversight we need on these projects.
So through the chair, if I may suggest. When it comes to, comes time to actually vote. You can just add, you know, subject to standard and project specific conditions as recommended by staff. But I will know if through the discussion, there are any board. Conditions that should be included, but I think if you just, you know. Conditions as recommended by staff would cover what trustee Pincum just stated.
Thank you. So what's the next one we're discussing?
That would be two Claremont, or sorry, Claremont Street Seeds of Hope Tiny Homes.
And again, I need to recuse myself on this conversation for Claremont Street Tiny Homes.
Through the chair, just so I'm clear, so I'll be going through each one and. Pretty much talking about what we're funding, how much we're funding, are we gonna do that as a whole? I'm just unclear as to how the process is moving right now.
So through the chair, so what I think what we're doing right now, if I'm understanding correctly, is each. Application will is going to be discussed again, but the focus will be on. Whether or not the board wants to, or you know, wants to vote, sorry, wants to fund it and the dollar amount. And we'll go through all of them to make sure the math is correct. And then at that point, there'll be, oh, there'll be two votes, one vote for. A larger batch of projects that does not include Claremont Street. Because trustee Pincum has to be recused from that item, and then there if Claremont Street is to be funded, there would be a separate vote for that.
Thank you.
Alright, so from my point of view, I think the the idea of this project is very interesting. I think that the. The potential for it is certainly. Good, and it could be a good opportunity to see if this particular housing opportunity would work in Worcester. I know there's a lot of support elsewhere in the city for the project, so. I think that there's a lot of folks that want to see this come to fruition. It could be, you know, a really good way of. Of seeing what that would look like in Worcester. As far as the the dollar amount, I think I I would defer to the city staff to see. The the best funding number for it, but as far as the project goes, I'm I'm positive about the project. Any other thoughts, comments on this project?
On this one, just, I know trustee Pincums recused, but again, I'd like to. To spread out the funding to as many units as as we possibly can. So potentially, just like the first one, maybe take twenty five thousand off for a hundred and seventy five thousand. That would be my. My thought.
Certainly. So right now, just to keep us in line, I'm not sure if. Jeanette, you've been doing the tallying on the side. I know we've got a hundred and twenty five thousand, a hundred and seventy five thousand for this project so far. So that would be a quick math here, three hundred thousand dollars towards our one point two?
Correct, yep. So nine hundred fifty thousand remains.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments on on this particular project?
With the tiny homes projects, they do have a lot of support and a lot of funding from other places. I was wondering, and maybe we can take another twenty five off. Just to be safe, because they do have other fundings and and support.
Through the chest, you would say a hundred and fifty? Other trustees, do you have thoughts on this?
I I mean, I'm I'm certainly open to whatever, you know, math makes the numbers work. I think that, you know, it's it's definitely worth considering. I think in terms of a project that's. Ready to go, I know one of the CPA priorities is things kind of happening a little bit sooner. Granted, it doesn't necessarily need to be our edict, but I know that that's a factor worth considering. If this one is, you know, sooner to happen, the the money might make it happen a little bit quicker, but I the. The exact timeline on this one escapes me.
So through the chair, the, in the application, the timeline for this. Project has them getting approval or already having zoning approvals and then. Construction start in November. Obviously, this is an outdated schedule. I'm not sure where the project currently stands, but that was what's in the application and then. The certificate of occupancy was anticipated in March, so you're looking at. Quick, it is a modular construction project, which. Should take less time, so I think that's why there's a shorter. Construction start to certificate of occupancy of only four months proposed.
Are there any other thoughts or suggestions on amending the amount of money to this particular project?
Well, just on the on the funding mix, there is some information there about some pending. Foundation support. Do we happen to have any more information about other funds that this project has received? It does seem from, you know, the folks who are involved in it, that there has been a lot of work and a lot of engagement with other kind of community partners. And so it it would be good to have a sense of what level of tolerance the project would have for 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 a lower lower award. As was suggested. I'm not sure if anyone has any information on that.
Not that I know of. Maybe if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chair, maybe we could just move forward with. You know, put two months to the side and when we're doing the math at the end, we can, we can make that decision, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm I'm for that motion, if it's okay with the board. So why don't we discuss the one oh four Armory Street, another Habitat for Humanity project? As far as this particular project, I I think that the great point with all of the owned houses is. The perpetuity of of the the. Of the affordability, so when somebody's going to go in, it's going to be deed restricted, keep it affordable, make sure that it's going to support. You know, that population indefinitely. So I think that's that's a big selling point for me there. Not sure if other folks, oh, sorry, I skipped Curtis, apologies. Maybe we can go out of order here, we'll come back to Curtis next. But did did anybody have any points on the the one oh four Armory Street? Again, I went out of order, I skipped Curtis, I highlighted on my screen, apologies.
Through the chair, I mean, just the same thing, the amount of money, I mean, so. We're talking about one oh four Armor Street, the rest for three hundred thousand dollars for the creation of two units. Where the other one, they're also, you know, requesting one fifty for one unit, so the math makes sense, however, we have to. I believe we need to lower the amount. Open to other opinions on that.
Through the chair, I agree with Jason. I would suggest an amount of maybe. Two hundred twenty five thousand.
I would even maybe say two hundred.
I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Brooks, I think two hundred's more in line where I'm at.
Any other trustees?
I'll defer to your knowledge on this one, James. I think that, Jim, sorry. I think on this one, there's also possibly probably some opportunity to tap into different funds in the city just based off of. Different qualifications that the the property may have, so that might be something worth exploring and suggesting, but. We could pencil this one in for two hundred unless anyone has an objection. So if we pencil this one in for two hundred right now, that has us at five hundred thousand potentially allocated. So jumping back a step to the Curtis apartment phase two. Again, positive on the project from my point of view, I think that, you know, it's a continuation, it's going to be more units. Not sure if there's other points that anyone on the board wants to call out, or. I'll defer to to Jim and, you know, Jason as far as suggestion to 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 finance the amount here.
Through the chair again, I'm in agreement. I mean, obviously, you know, curse part would seem to be rebuilt. There's going to be that differ between thirty four and thirty six units. However, for funding, I'm looking at lowering that as well. Nothing too drastic, but did anybody have an opinion on a dollar amount?
What is suggested two hundred thousand? Because they're asking for two fifty, so two hundred thousand, fifty thousand is not far off on what they need.
Yeah, I'd probably be closer to two twenty five as as there is, you know, thirty some odd net units. That'll be affordable housing units. So just based on that, but I'm, again, two hundred or two twenty five, I'm on board with. This project on our list is the one that has the most net units being created for affordable housing, so um, I'm okay with awarding him a little bit more, and the two twenty five is where my number would be.
I agree with the two twenty five, cause they are um, netting a lot more units. Also, it's, it's, it's the ending of the project. So anything to help to move it along and wrap it up.
So are we saying two twenty five, or do we want to have that kind of question mark at the end? Between two hundred and two twenty five?
I'm at two twenty five, but you know, if anybody differs on that, then.
Yeah, I'm teetering, because I would, I do wanna see what the end numbers look like and try to base it off of that. If we can, at the end, do the two twenty five, I'd prefer to do that.
So if we do two twenty five here, that's gonna bring us to seven twenty five with uh, four more projects to fund. Just do some uh, quick math here, bear with me.
Six hundred thousand left.
Is it six hundred? I, maybe I did my math wrong, I, I had four seventy five?
Maybe you're correct. I'm trying to do on the, um, on the fly as well. Um, so if we have one twenty?
I've got uh, four hundred and seventy five thousand.
Right, I, I missed a zero in my calculation.
So that would leave us with four hundred and seventy five thousand for uh, to divide between Colony on Grove, twelve Benefit, twenty six uh, Claridge, and thirty six Fifth Avenue.
We talk about Colony on Grove next, I think that is kind of relevant, given the conversation around the home funding replacement potential, and so that total award amount could be lowered pretty significantly, um, is my understanding.
Yeah, so let's talk about Colony on Grove. So right now, the request is in for uh, four hundred thousand, assuming, you know, and again, we don't award the home funding, but assuming uh, the chunk of it becomes available. Uh, there may be some opportunity there. Um, and I think the timing on uh, this project may also allow for a little bit more flexibility. In terms of this project, uh, what if we were to do two hundred thousand?
Through the chairman agreement with the two hundred thousand number for Colony.
I agree as well.
Agreed.
Through the chair, what was the amount that they were asking? I don't have my paperwork in front of me.
Uh, four hundred thousand, but if we're assuming a potential for shifting funds and basically changing what home funds may be available to the city, again, we don't award those, but um, at the scale of project, maybe possible, maybe more open. Based off of changes, based off of grants from this project that may make funding available from a different basket.
Does anybody have an idea, um, the math that we have, what do we have left, and what is the request that we have left?
So if we were to do two hundred thousand for Colony, that would bring us up to nine hundred and twenty five thousand. And that would have us with two hundred and seventy five thousand left, or, yep, two hundred and seventy five thousand left.
And the balance of the request is much more over that?
One point eight as a net was requested. We have one point two.
Okay, so, okay, gotcha.
But for example, if we look at, you know, Colony, if we were to award Colony two hundred thousand, you know, that makes up two hundred thousand of that six hundred thousand shortfall of fully funding uh, all of the, the requests, if that makes sense.
So the uh, availability of the two hundred and fifty thousand from home funds from Ternetti, um, from Curtis Apartments, um, that would, if that was, if it was two hundred and fifty plus uh, one hundred and fif- fifty, that would bring it up to the four hundred thousand dollar ask, would it be? I mean, given the funding limitations, would it be reasonable to look at potentially a hundred and fif- fifty thousand rather than two hundred thousand for um, Colony?
I mean, I think anything's possible. We are only really able to award what we have to award, so it is possible. What it would do for the Colony project, I can't speak to, but we were able to allocate as, as we have available, and as we see, you know, fit within the parameter, we, we can't go over, but uh, going uh, under within the requirements is, is my understanding.
And I'm sorry, Joe, what, what did you propose, uh, through the chair? What, what was the proposed amount, Joe?
Well, I had, um, you've done the math of four hundred thousand. Uh, if there was, if, on the assumption, and again, I don't know how strong the assumption is, that two hundred and fifty thousand of the home funds is awarded, then the balance would be a hundred and fifty rather than um, two hundred, which I think was the original propos- the proposed number.
Um, Mr. Chair, it looks like um, Craig, uh, the developer, has his hand raised?
Yep, the chair recognizes uh, Representative from Colony.
Yeah, um, excuse me, I'm battling a cold here, so you'll have to deal with the voice, but um, the um, the one caveat on the tran- like, the swapping of trust funds versus home funds is that there's a limit of eleven units that can be funded by Home before it triggers a significant cost increase on the product, project. And there's a limit on how much per unit home funds, you know, there's a, I believe there's a limit on how much subsidy per unit can be given by the city. So I'm not sure we can handle all two hundred and fifty thousand of what Curtis Apartments is giving back. If, maybe not any, actually, looking at the, looking at the numbers, but um, anyway, that's just to give some context to the, to this shuffling of funds.
Appreciate that.
So with Colony, um, one thing I like is they have six eighty eight units going on mine too. Um, so, you know, I was looking at two hundred thousand dollars as my number on that one. Just because, again, that's something we, we need a lot more of as well in the city.
I'm com- comfortable with that, yeah.
Uh, apologies, I, I missed the, the number there. Wha- what did you suggest, Jason?
Two hundred thousand.
Okay, so at that two hundred number still, so in that scenario, we are uh, again up to uh, well, we were, we've got two hundred and seventy five thousand left, if, if that math adds up. Um, please double check my math, I've got, um, if we were.
So through the chair, if I may, um, just, I can read through what I've noted so far. Okay, so, yep, so for thirty three Ripley, um, it was one hundred twenty five thousand dollars suggested. For Clermont Street, there is either one hundred fifty thousand or one hundred seventy five thousand. Uh, then for Curtis, it was either two hundred thousand um, or two hundred twenty five thousand. And then for both one oh four Armory and Colony, it's two hundred thousand dollars. So um, on the lower end of awards, we'll have three hundred seventy five thousand dollars left to, for the other um, applicants. Or if you go with the higher amounts, three hundred twenty five thousand dollars left.
Thank you.
And I can actually share my screen, that way we can have this in front of us.
That would be super helpful.
I will do that. Okay, you should see a running tally, um, and I'm highlighting the ones that have questions about the amounts. This is a running tally, and then what remains?
This is very helpful and very organized, thank you. So while you've got that pulled up, Jeanette, so looking at the, maybe the next project, the amount requested is uh, two hundred eighty eight thousand five hundred dollars, and then I can actually feed in the uh, I'll pull up the other numbers just so we can fill that in uh, to look at. I had uh, two hundred eighty eight thousand five hundred?
I'm sorry, through the chair, is there a question?
Oh, I didn't know if you were gonna punch in the uh, the requested, oh, this is we, uh, never mind, I, I understood it to be the, the requested amount on the left-hand side, sorry.
It's both, it's uh, what's been discussed so far, that's funding allocations.
Yeah, no, I was, I was going off the uh, the original, original request, and sorry about that.
Oh, I would suggest, um, because of what the remaining is, and this, this is one out of three projects left, I mean, it's gonna be significantly lower, in my opinion, than what they're asking for. I would say even between like, one twenty five, one seventy five area. And they did say that they had the possibility of taking out a loan as well.
Through the chair, I mean, they already have what I consider some, some financing risk, right? They, they've got the crowd lending with a twelve percent interest rate. Uh, and I know that's been extended through January seventeenth, uh, is their, for their, their construction loan, but um, I'm worried about this project if we don't give them a decent amount of money. That'd be more.
Are you speaking of twelve Benefit Street?
Yeah, let me just check. Yeah, twelve Benefit Street, that's correct. Yep, so I'd be looking at closer to two hundred thousand dollars for them. You know, they are creating two units at sixty percent AMI. You know, with an accessible unit. Yeah, that's my opinion on it.
Yeah, I tend to agree with um, trustee Ping, Pingcom on that, I think, um, they also, I think the question about the extent at which it's feasible to continue the project, um, with that level of funding, with a level of funding much below what's, what's requested, um, may may, make it unfeasible, especially given things like the um, nine months to lease, and whether or not that can be supported within the budget. Um, so I would agree on the higher side, if po- if, if, if the funds allow.
Yeah, um, I say we, we see how it looks with two hundred thousand.
So where does that leave us with the last two?
We have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars left, or up to two hundred thousand left, the spreadsheet she's sharing with us there.
And if I may, so it, it really depends, you know, when we go back, um, there might be a little bit more or less wiggle room, depending on what we choose for the three highlighted projects.
For the Claridge uh, project, um, I'd probably be maybe at the seventy five thousand dollar range.
I'm in agreement with that number, I think that's, you know, it's a single-family renovation. I think I'm at seventy five thousand dollars as well for that one unit.
I agree with that, that, because even looking at the pictures, that was a total, like, whole gut job that he had to do, down to the studs.
And it's the um, the only homeownership outside of Habitat that uh, we have in this batch also, so.
One of my concerns on that project, that I, I guess, I'm sure you guys will go through it, but the soft cost on that, right, when we looked at uh, twelve thousand dollars for bank fees, uh, and eleven thousand for interest and financing. I'm hoping there's some mistake there, but that's something you guys will go through in more detail, is, is that correct, as a staff?
Correct, and yeah, we'll ask questions about it, and that can be part of a conditional commitment. Um, one of the conditions is to verify costs.
Thank you, yeah, like the marketing and all that too, thank you.
And that brings us to thirty sixth Fifth Avenue. And their original requested amount was one hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, it's unfortunate, um, Frank, we're, the way I'm looking at this and through the chair is, we, we can't give you the whole one fifty, we can see that here on the math. So I guess my question before we deliberate an amount, whether anywhere between fifty and a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, if you're gonna be selling this anyways, are you freeing up that capital to go to other projects? Or is there a number that you still think you can move forward with?
I could, I could make the a hundred and twenty five thousand work, for sure. Um, if not, then um, I would put the uh, the lot up for sale. Unfortunately, it's not, not what I wanna do, I want, I wanna do what I do, and I wanna do what I've done for the last two decades.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that we just, unfortunately, we only have so much money to go through, right, with all these applications?
Hundred percent, I, I, a hundred percent, and um, you know, we're, we're ready to do this, we're, you know, our numbers are correct, there's, there's no uh, you know, we, we, we got a lot invested in this, a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of, you know, good resources, a lot of uh, you know, I got a good track record, so these, these dollars, if you choose to do the one twenty five, if, if there's one twenty five left, and you choose to do this. Uh, this is a project that I'm gonna bring to fruition, I'm gonna provide housing, you know. For four families for for decades to come, like I've been doing for decades already. So I'm, I'm hoping we can make this happen collectively. And I'll certainly uh make the one twenty-five work.
Let's pencil in the one twenty-five, I think.
Yeah, I'm in agreement as well.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't see us being able to. Give a full one twenty-five on this um. I'm more aligned at seventy-five thousand for this project, um just. Unfortunately, you know, some of it comes down to the experience, the developer, the um. Just the the. The engineering costs are are higher on that, um single-person entity, I mean, there's, there's a lot of risk here too. I I'm proposing seventy-five thousand dollars.
May I just? Say one thing. My developer's built three hundred homes, um he's a well-known builder, he's got a great reputation, central mass builders. Um, I I have zero reservations that Michael Cohen is gonna bring this car uh project to fruition, I've built other homes with him. And um, I mean, uh his reputation precedes him, I'll I'll leave it at that and uh. Again, hopefully we can make it work, my pro forma is spot on. And uh seventy-five ain't gonna get it done, seventy-five is gonna get the lot sold and. There'll be a side-by-side, two families go up and some families from Boston will be renting that thing for about thirty-five hundred bucks aside, which is what we're trying to not do in the city of Westa. Uh, I've been a low-income landlord, I'm aim gonna provide to four families and they are gonna be low-income, one of them for you you folks in your program, but. Uh nevertheless, there's gonna be a lot of bang for the buck for Westa. In in general, because it's gonna be four people from four good agencies. Um, and I got letters of recommendation from all four of these agencies that will tell you what kind of landlord I am. And how I've been providing for these folks for decades, you know, with that, I'll just let you make your decision and I'm a piece either way, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, um a question for the developer, do you think you could make the project work with a hundred thousand?
That. It really depends on where the numbers are, um you know, I mean, everything fluctuates constantly. Say that again, what was the number?
A hundred thousand.
So that would be fifty thousand less than than what the owner was asking for. I I I would have to go over the numbers again, I mean, we're we're pretty tight where we're at already. Fifty thousand dollars additional. Um, I know uh the owner said twenty-five thousand, he could make work, it it would depend on. You know, I mean, I I I've been building for a long time, so I I where where it is right now with everybody uh. Lumber is probably one of the bigger costs and uh, you know, those quotes, they only hold for fourteen days. Um, so uh, right now, the market seems to be um fairly. Uh, stable, I mean, it's fluctuating, but. An additional twenty-five thousand on top of that. Yeah, that's something I'd have to sit down and talk with the homeowner with and go over numbers again. Get new uh quotes. For uh. The whole project.
And through the chair, what when was the last quote you had? Because I know you just stated they only last fourteen days, so when was the last one you had?
Uh, I think what we gave you is uh several months old.
Uh, you know, I'd like to say I don't wanna like start deleting things like, you know. Back balconies or, you know, um. You know, you know, for the first floor, they're gonna have like a cement, you know, pad to put some, you know, chairs and a table out there. Um, you know, we we've gone real aggressive um with. With the project that we're putting together in in terms of uh doing it on a budget. And um, I I don't wanna come up where I'm short and we start to. Maybe sacrifice some things that are gonna be, you know, benefit to the tenants, you know, I'm trying to do some balconies, I'm coming out of pocket for that, I wanna put. Do a little balcony off each unit, which, you know, makes a big difference to some of these folks. Uh, so they get some outdoor time and uh just a little bit better quality of life, you know, it's not necessary for me to do it. Um, but, you know, this. You know. I I I don't wanna go, I I wanna do it, do it right. And uh, you know, add a budget, but I don't wanna start deleting because uh. You know, I'm trying to cut twenty-five thousand out of a budget that we really did a good job of putting together. Um, in terms of using real numbers.
Through the chair, um if I may, um, I think. A suggestion is that the board votes based off of the application. Their applications that were received and then um any, we'll be issuing, you know, conditional commitments and. You know, talking with the applicants after um. Then we can have these discussions and, you know, it's a conditional commitment, it's not binding on either party, so just, I want you to bear that in mind. That's it.
Okay, with that being said, I would propose, excuse me, through the chair, with that being said, I would propose a hundred thousand.
I can meet in the middle at a hundred thousand, I, I think that's, I think we could do that.
Through the chair, I just wanna have a little bit of discussion here, I think. That some of these um quotes that we've given, people were not even here to give their. Thoughts, the developers were not present. And we voted to give them, to cut it down, but to give them. A certain amount without any input from them. I'm more prone to giving Fifth Avenue the hundred and twenty-five thousand, at least they were here. You're asking them to drop seventy-five thousand dollars. Which is significant. I know that's half, but, and there are half for others, but at least he was here. The other, the, some of the other people were not present, so we really don't know. Where their heads are at or whether or not they can continue without the money that they requested.
Through the chair, well, I agree that they are not present, um. I think the. This is a voting thing and and yes, we're, we're open to their input. Within the day, we we have to make sure these numbers work. And if you decide, if we all decide to increase the amount for someone that's present. We're gonna have to take it from somewhere else.
We're not talking about increasing the amount, we're talking about decreasing it, but not as significant as it was suggested.
I'm comparing on the spreadsheet here, right? So right now, we have a hundred thousand and seventy-five thousand. Um, if you go with a hundred thousand, we already have to find fifty thousand dollars to take away from the other ones that we've already. Adjusted, it's fifty thousand dollars we're in the hole right now, so. If you're gonna increase that Fifth Avenue to one twenty-five, uh that's a seventy-five thousand dollar difference, we have to find that from somewhere else. And I just wanna remind, you know, it's unfortunate, but this was the lowest scoring application overall, voted by the trustees.
Yeah, I would tend tend to agree, I mean, in terms of looking at the, the, the scoring, right, we, we scored the. Proposals based upon the information that we had, we looked at them side-by-side and. That has to be taken into consideration, right? I I think um. We all know that we can't fund everything, um but I do think it's important to take into consideration the way that we've reviewed the proposals and and that. Should and has to factor into the decisions in the end.
So right now, through the chair, if we go with a hundred thousand dollars for Fifth Ave, we, again, we still have fifty thousand dollars. We have to make up from somewhere, is, is that correct? Am I reading this spreadsheet correct? Says remain.
Could you? To restate the question, I apologize.
Um, based on what I'm looking at here, it's, it's, if we were to fund thirty-six Fifth Avenue with a hundred thousand dollars. We are fifty thousand dollars in the hole. Is that right?
It that depends on the, the final dollar amounts for the other awards.
The other. Exactly.
Yep. So if you're going with the higher amount for the higher scoring applications, then, then you're correct.
Right, so what I was looking at was that first column as you go on, Jeanette, and of the remaining um funding, at one point before we. Did the hundred thousand was at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and that's why I said the hundred thousand, leaving the twenty-five there to accrue. Interest later.
Through the chair, I think. Um, we'd probably wanna get to to zero ideally to, to get the mark, uh to get the money on the street. Uh, and get these units built, so I would suggest um. Getting the number to to zero, because we do have one point two five, uh one point two to award. One point two five to award, so I would suggest we award the, the, the whole thing. Um, because our goal is, is increasing units.
So then if that, if that's the case, could we add the other twenty-five to the twenty-six claretge renovation? Since that was a single-family home?
So through the chair, if I may, um ask for, so you're suggesting to increase the funding amount for. Claretge to one hundred thousand dollars here?
Yes.
So that went also, through the chair, that one also didn't score well, and it's one unit, yes, it's a ownership versus rental. But I, I would, I think staying at that. Seventy-five thousand dollar number made. Sense to me, um. Let me see what other ones. Uh, I can't speak on Clermont, so let's look at Curtis. Curtis, again, that one has, you know. Over thirty units being built there, uh new net units to us. I like.
Give them the full grant, the full, their full ask, because I mean, they they needed two hundred and fifty thousand.
I wanna be fair here, we're, I I think we have to take a little from everybody. Um, I was at, I'm more towards the two twenty-five on that one now, on the higher amount for Curtis. And then. The other one was twelve Benefit, we were discussing, uh we have that range on there. And again, I was at two hundred thousand dollars for Benefit Street as well, um in a neighborhood that really, really needs this.
I agree.
I know that's like a whole new column, has to be created when we're going through all these here, but.
Through the chair, feel free to um instruct me or any of the trustees, please feel free to. Directly ask me to add things to this spreadsheet, and I'll accommodate.
I'm just trying to figure out how we can get thirty-six Fifth Ave, you know, a hundred thousand, and and I don't see the one twenty-five number coming. So.
I think, I just, I think, you know, we've asked Benefit Street to take a fairly significant cut from their, their original ask. And so I don't, I I wouldn't, I don't think we should. I I I think we need to look kind of apples to apples here and look kind of side-by-side and seeing. Again, the scoring of Benefit Street, for instance, versus the scoring of other applications and. Assign the funding appropriately and that's, that's my take um. On things.
Thank you, what would you propose then, that we approve for Benefit Street, Joe?
And two, two hun- two hundred, I think it's a strong proposal, and I think that the higher end of that um. Would still be significantly below the original ask, um and you know, all of these asks, all of these requests are. And facing the same challenges with costs and things like like that, um so I think. I think the, 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 the reduction in from the overall request um. The initial request is, is fair at two hundred.
I'm in agreement on that one, I think, two hundred thousand for Benefit Street, and the good news is for all the developers, uh I saw today the interest rates are down. Uh, the lowest since January of this year, so. Costs for financing at least go down for everybody. It's a full point lower than it was in January. So you're putting the original requested amount, is that what we're doing on the right here now? Yep, yeah.
Yes.
And I noticed you unhighlighted twelve Benefit Street. Is there? A reason that we did that or just mistake?
So I was following along with the conversation, I don't know if we said, there are two, two trustees that um expressed. Yeah, two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Got it, that's why I was trying to figure out, right?
I agree with the two hundred thousand for Benefit Street, I'm just, yeah, I'm okay with that.
I see, this makes it, yes, so these are definitive numbers, unless somebody says otherwise. So we're still on the right column, we're still seventy-five thousand dollars shy. Again, I can't speak on Clermont, um but on Curtis. I think I'm good with the two twenty-five on Curtis. Anybody else?
And unfortunately, I I I'm okay with that with Curtis, too, unfortunately, um the thirty-six Fifth Ave. I mean, if we can't do the hundred thousand and seventy-five thousand, it's not gonna be enough, I I I don't know what we're supposed to do with that.
If the funding isn't used, is it returned for a future, it's returned for a future cycle, I would imagine, so it's not. Lost, but it is lost in terms of being able to support some of the projects that we have right, right now, of course, so. Um, I would say for claretge, I would be more supportive of the lower side at lower end as well, I think we have two, we have a couple of really strong projects for home homeownership that I think are. Very strong, very good projects, and so I I would be comfortable with the seventy-five thousand for for claretge, again, given, given the scoring as well.
I'm gonna agree with that, seventy-five thousand for claretge.
I agree, I was, I'm, I was back and forth, but I agree with that.
I think it's just the hard reality of the numbers.
It really is, and that's what makes, this, it's making it very difficult.
Look at us, working for the government and balancing a budget here.
I think, you know, my question around Clermont Street is, um, there were some. Aspects of the proposal that that weren't kind of clear about. The status of the funding, um there is quite a high amount of foundation funding for that project, it appears. And and, you know, I I know there's a lot of kind of support for the project in the community in other places, so I mean, I would. Given that we have a limited amount of funding, I would maybe err on the side of, 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 of the lower of the two awards. Because I think that it may be the case that that project would be able to um recover those funds. More than others might, but again, I I I don't know enough about the specifics of the funding mix, but, and that's just my sense and. More than others might, but again, I, I, I don't know enough about the specifics of the funding mix, but that's just my sense, and again, given what we know at the moment.
I agree.
And in commentary.
So the right column, there's.
Actual numbers?
Actuals.
Correct, the, the green are the, the ones that had. Some semblance of consensus prior to a vote.
And that leaves us with seventy-five thousand for Fifth Avenue.
I'm comfortable with that, I know it's unfortunate, we can't fund every project, but given, I think. Given all of the factors, I'm comfortable with that. As well. I think that's the original, I'm like you, it's suggested.
Yes. Fortunately, that's. The numbers we have to work with, and the numbers we have to work with.
Can I ask a question?
You're welcome to ask a question.
You know, just before the final decision goes in. If I could make, if I could make the project work with a hundred thousand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven others. That'd be. I, I know you have a scoring system, I'm just really confident in my ability to get my job to fruition. Not for any other reason, but, you know, I've done this. I'm here, I'm at the meeting, my builder's here, we're at the meeting. Couldn't imagine not being at a meeting and, and, and going, asking for a grant. But I am here. It, and, and here's just an ask, looks like there's seven other people. Above me. Would, would it be too much of a hardship to take a few thousand off of each of those other seven? To get me up to a hundred?
If, if I, if I can cut you off right now, sir, unfortunately, we're not able to negotiate across, you know, participants, we have a limited amount.
Fair enough.
And, and I totally understand the position, I think right now, the way that the numbers work and. The way that we're able to allocate things is, is what we're looking at potentially here on the screen pending a vote. I. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think that this would be the best place to, to negotiate or change. Around, you know, submissions, this is what we have to work with right now. As Jeanette had mentioned earlier, these aren't binding, so, you know, if the numbers don't work. You, you don't have to move forward with the, the funding, it's, it's something that still needs to get worked out at the, you know, the next step of the, the letter commitment and such. But, but I think that what we have here on the screen is, is what we're gonna have to go with tonight.
Thank you. And respect, I respect that.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment to the developer also. Not with the amounts per se, but before, you know, you may, make your decision whether to move forward or not. You could potentially look at the, the performer, maybe putting a unit market rate, it might work with these numbers, so. Just something that, to think about there.
Yep, we, we will discuss that definitely, thank you for that. That thought.
So, let's move on the, the funding pieces here, so. Just a quick question, city, is it best to do this in one motion per project, or one large motion, what would be the, the best option here?
Through the chair, I, my suggestion is, what I put on the spreadsheet here is to do one vote for. The projects that trustee Pincombe does not have to recuse himself from, and then to do a vote for the Claremont, Claremont Street project.
Yeah, but just to confirm, should we, one motion for Thirty-Three Ripley, or one motion for Thirty-Three Ripley, Curtis, one oh four combined?
Combined, yes.
I think combined, we've already discussed and agreed, right? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I, I missed the, the question, trustee Pincombe.
It was a statement, so through the chair, sorry, I think it makes sense to do it combined, because we've already had the discussion of each one. Individually, and now we've seen to have come to a consensus, now, if the vote doesn't pass, we can always go back and make adjustments again, is that? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep. Bear with me one moment here. So I move that the Worcester Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees approve conditional funding commitments to the following projects. Totalling one million fifty thousand dollars, as outlined on the screen. For the Thirty-Three Ripley, Curtis Apartments Phase Two, One Oh Four Armory Street, Colony on Grove Beach. Twelve Benefit Street, Twenty-Six Claridge renovation, and Thirty-Six Fifth Avenue. Subject to the standard project-specific conditions as recommended by staff, on that motion, do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
And we'll do a roll call here, so trustee Agudelo, yes, trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Hampton Dance?
Yes.
Trustee Kefour?
Yes.
Trustee McAvoy?
Yes.
Trustee Pincombe?
I'm sorry, I know you're taking a roll call, but I saw this math. Am I misreading this? Did I just? Because that's not gonna make, the numbers aren't gonna work. Are they? Oh, it is, yes, one point two five, I'm sorry, I can't do math in my head, I need a spreadsheet, yes, just move on, forget what I said.
And, and I, I said one, I, I was wrong in my math, I, I'm sorry, I didn't have the one point two five.
So my vote was yes.
Yes. And with the revised number, one million, one hundred thousand, apologies, but with that, the motion passes. So our second vote here, and trustee Pincombe will be recused. I, I move that the Worcester Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees approve conditional funding commitments to the. Claremont Street project in, for the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, subject to standard and project-specific conditions as recommended by staff, do I have a second?
I second.
And on that motion, trustee Agudelo, yes, trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Hampton Dance?
Yes.
Trustee Kefour?
Yes.
Trustee McAvoy?
Yes.
Trustee Valdez? And with that, the motion passes as well, so thank you to all of our developers that, that joined us tonight, and appreciate you taking the time to join us. Moving forward to our next item. After tonight's votes, staff is going to prepare and issue conditional commitment letters to the selected awardees. These are gonna outline specific conditions that are going to be satisfied before executing a funding agreement. Before we end the session, are there any points anyone on the board has to call out, future items to address the next meeting? So hearing on, that's gonna conclude tonight's agenda, is there a motion to adjourn the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees?
I motion to adjourn.
And on that motion, trustee Agudelo, yes, trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Hampton Dance?
Yes.
Trustee Kefour?
Yes.
Trustee McAvoy?
Yes.
Trustee Pincombe?
Yes.
And with that, the meeting is adjourned, thank you everybody for joining, and we will see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, everyone.